Good afternoon and welcome to the city council's special meeting Tuesday, October 1st, 2024. Two items on the agenda. First of these is discussion regarding the contract with Food and Shelter for emergency shelter. Mr. Anthony Higginson.
Alrighty. Well, back again so soon. We were talking last week. If you guys remember, we kind of gave you the current status of the contract and where things were left with Food and Shelter. Based on, you know, feedback we got last week, we have been working on getting an update from Food and Shelter on the contract and, you know, potential future operations or willingness to continue operating. We're continuing to discuss potential other operators who could operate the shelter, and we've been doing that this week. And we've also still needing feedback from you guys based on, you know, what we've learned in the past week, on the agenda items that we would need for next week, the eighth. So since last week, like I said, we've met with potential operators, and I think that that is going to be a necessity moving forward because we met with Food and Shelter last week, or yesterday, and based on what they told us, you know, they are not willing to operate the shelter past the end of the winter season. So come March 31st, they will no longer be operating the shelter for sure. But they are willing to operate the shelter until that time or until we find a new operator. We then asked, you know, would you be willing to operate under the, you know, proposed contract, the new contract? And they did say that they would be willing to, you know, look it over. They got back with us today, and we did receive some contract language and some edits from them based on the draft that was presented to you guys at the last meeting, right? So this is where we're currently at on those contract terms. We did get clarification on which ones they did not agree with. So there are about four main categories of language that they were displeased with. I think the first one was an objection. This is the biggest one. Objection to the requirement for a third-party security contractor in total. So that is something, again, that we intended to do having, you know, at the very beginning of the contract, and I think that is something that council has expressed in previously that is finds very important. For what it's worth, when we've been speaking with other shelter in like much larger, like best practices, like even a shelter that Food and Shelter themselves considered best practices, we found that they would not be willing to operate a shelter without the minimum level of security that we're identifying. In fact, they operate on a higher level of security, right? So we are already kind of below standard in terms of security level that we're proposing, and we staff does not feel like it is unreasonable. And we do feel like it would be recommended to have that minimum level of security moving forward. So then we can go on. They had objections to the internal auditor provision or the audit provisions. They don't want, our internal auditor being the one to audit them, they do want a third-party independent auditor if there are any audits from the city. They want some other things as well as the right to offer a written response to the audit findings of that third-party auditor before those findings remain public, and, you know, some other small changes here and there, like us giving them notice that we are intending to audit them. And for the most part, I think that this is mostly within our expectation of how we would want to proceed with an audit moving forward anyway. I think those are less of a concern. There's also an objection to the city's right to recoup funds if a future audit finds improper expenditures. So this is standard contract language in most government reimbursement contracts, you know, so I would not recommend agreeing to a contract if this wasn't a part of it. And then also, last one would be objection to a dedicated bank account for the project. If we were continuing, you know, further than the end of the winter season, we would want this. I think it's fine on a short-term basis, especially under a recruitment or a reimbursement contract to continue with how they've been operating currently with their bank account.
Do they give any background or reasoning for one and three, items one and three up there, about why they were blocking on those?
On the third, the right to recoup fund, that one, they felt that the, it was, if I'm remembering the email correctly, it was, they felt like it was kind of, the word they used was attacking specifically, and I think that they found it unnecessary considering that we have termination rights and audit rights. But that doesn't necessarily give us the right to say, hey, you know, we did find out eventually that those funds were not, you know, used properly, or maybe there was, you know, fraud, and lots of things that that would occur. But, you know, in that event, right, we would want to be able to get that money back or, you know, have those rights so that, I mean, and like I said, that's pretty standard. So, and again, we were just got these today, so there might be some confusion there.
What about item number?
Oh, sorry, I didn't remember.
No, it's all right.
I think that was more of, you know, they are operating, I think they have, I think, either one or two, maybe more, current employees who were or are CLEET certified, and they feel like they can provide a decent level of security and adequate level of security with what they're operating under currently. And so I think that, and there's also the requirement to wand and to make sure that no weapons are being brought into the facility, stuff like that, that would have been contained in the contract. Those would have just now be taken over by a, you know, employee of a friend's house or Food and Shelter instead of that third-party company. So.
What kind of liability risks are there with that arrangement, both for a friend's house and for the city?
I think the more, so they are an independent contractor. How they choose to, you know, run the shelter, I mean, that kind of provides a level of security for us in terms of, you know, we would not probably be liable if something went wrong and they, you know, were found liable because they didn't provide adequate security.
Even though it's a city-owned building?
Potentially that could be a way for it. I doubt it. I think that we would be pretty, pretty well protected under the Torquay Act. The problem, I think, is not so much of like a legal risk in terms of like health and safety risk, in terms of like, do we think this is an adequate level of security considering some of the incidents that have occurred in the past month or so? And is that something that, you know, council would be comfortable with just from a health and safety perspective, a policy perspective? So.
Thank you. Councilmember Dixon.
Anthony, Rick, on the security, did we require that or in the original kind of RFP we put out or the one that they answered, what level of, did we require CLEET or all that, or did they propose that?
So any, you know, if you're hiring a third-party security company, like any security company that offers its services for hire has to be CLEET licensed, whether it's armed or unarmed, right? This would be an unarmed security contractor or unarmed security services. We did say that there was, you know, that security had to be provided when we initially issued an RFP for a permanent shelter location. Food and Shelter in its response did indicate that they would be hiring a third-party, I think, independent contractor for security, and that's a pretty standard on how shelters operate throughout the state. So I think that, you know, in the feedback that we had gotten from some of the other operators we spoke with are, you know, especially the bigger shelters or, you know, the low-barrier shelters, is that, you know, they can't really think of a lot of operators who operate without security. And then the one that they kind of identify that doesn't operate with security, it's really like a very specific culture in that facility. They have incidents, and a lot of the times they are big incidents, but I think that, you know, even with security, right, incidents can happen. It's just level of prevention, right, is what you're getting. And for about the same cost as they would employ their own employee to do it, it wouldn't be that much more expensive for a private security contractor who, again, is licensed and everything like that. So, but yeah, they, they specifically in their response to the RFP indicated that they would be hiring a third-party.
And if you also recall, the agenda item for the approval of this contract in October of 2022, when they listed their staffing needs specifically, has a provision in there that their staffing needs included two security guards from Blackjack Security, and then they gave us, again, the hours and the rate of pay. So that was one of their staffing requests that was submitted to council back in October of 2022 when the contract was initially approved.
Thank you.
I'm honing in on the objection to the city's right to recoup, because then if we did end up in a situation like that, it would just become a lawsuit, right?
Potentially.
I fail to see how that is better than, you know, having it in the contract.
Councilmember Hinkle. On their objection to the internal auditor, what, why, why is that objection?
So in our meeting with them yesterday, we wanted clarification on the reason that they, you know, pulled out of the operation of a friend's house. I think it was clear to us that the real reasons was the audit and how, you know, they perceived it was conducted, and the city's lack of, I guess, support is the word that they would use in terms of, like, they had issued, and it was on your packet for the last meeting, three or four different settlement demands, you know, demanding that the city, you know, in the words they used, I think, on the meeting yesterday, fix the audit so that it no longer shows that they were, you know, there are any findings. We took the stance that we don't want to necessarily change the factual basis for the findings. We would rather enter into a new contract to resolve the audit finding, because that's normally what you would do in response to an audit. So, because we didn't necessarily think that what was found was incorrect. And I think that there was a fundamental disagreement on that basis.
If we were to do an external auditor, third-party audit, would that be at the expense of the city?
If we, you know, felt like we wanted an internal or an external auditor, it would be at the expense of the city. I'm not exactly sure how much that would cost. What I would say is the reimbursement contract, we're very confident with the level of oversight that we'll be having going forward. You know, we're going to be requesting essentially every month is going to be its own audit, because it's a reimbursement, and they're going to have to provide documentation for every dollar they spend. So we would be able to, you know, ideally, when we get that reimbursement request at the first of every month, we're going to be able to verify and, you know, go over every expense that they're requesting and make sure that it is supported by documentation, and only then will we issue payment. So it's more of a front-end rather than a back-end way to provide oversight.
Have any of the proposed companies that we're talking to, potentially manage it, have any of them had adversity to us doing an internal audit? They also want?
No, not necessarily. And I will say, when we explained what the contract terms are under the new contract, one described it as they have the inverse problem in the city they're in, whereas, you know, the city isn't paying that much in terms of it, and they're having a lot of trouble, you know, for example, getting paid by, you know, their city, and that's taking a really long time. They're having to float upwards of $100,000 a month of their own funds that would normally be reimbursed by the city. This is a net 25, or like a 25-day turnaround for reimbursement, right? All general fund dollars, 100% expenses paid, shelter operation. The level of support that the city is giving in order to provide, you know, these 52 people in shelter overnight is unprecedented, especially in Oklahoma. So this is very, like, when we described that to these shelter operators, it blew their mind in a way, because they are not receiving that kind of support, and that kind of support is unheard of. It's through private donation, right? That they get the majority of their, you know, expenses. So the problem that, you know, we're having is that, you know, when you're, in terms of finding a new operator, it's hard to just, on a very short notice, jump to a different city and provide now in two different locations operation. I mean, staffing everywhere is a problem, right? And so on short notice that, but no, no one has had a problem with, and I was specifically sent it to, you know, the providers that we've talked to have been willing to come to the table and look at us, and they have not necessarily provided any negative feedback based on what we've given them. We haven't gotten into that level of detail. But again, you know, we would expect some level of interaction with the contract terms that we would normally provide, which is what we expected of Food and Shelter. And so, again, the draft that we provided in Food and Shelter, the draft that we're providing these other contracts, is open to negotiation. But from the feedback that we're getting from these other operators, it's, it looks, it looks good. And it's not unlike what they're currently operating under, except for they could expect to be paid.
Can you explain or clarify to me the objection to having the dedicated bank account for this type of project?
So, and that's something that, again, a dedicated bank account makes it easier on the back end to conduct an audit, because you're not having to, like, if this is only a portion of your operation, there's going to be a lot of funds going in and out of, you know, a bank account that's all of your expenses, right? It was, it was hard for us, I think, when we were conducting the audit, to reconcile some of those expenses, and I think it took a long time. If your accounting, you know, if your level of accounting is a certain degree, it makes it easier, but on the back end, it just made it a little bit more easier for us to go in and audit. A different operator, we might not necessarily require that, just because of the way that they, you know, do their accounting. And in this instance, again, because it would be a short-term contract, we would be less, it's not as important, I think, for the city to require that. So I think that this is one that we should be fine letting go. And it does, again, you have to move that money to a bank account. You know, now you're paying all of your bills on two accounts, whereas before it would make it a little easier for them administratively if they could just operate under the one account. And so that's understandable.
That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. So you just said the city is providing an unprecedented amount of resources to the shelter compared to what other shelters are doing, correct?
At least for the ones we've talked to in Oklahoma. I mean, I can't, I don't know.
Right, we can't.
Like other cities. So an unprecedented amount of help that we're giving to get people off
our streets. And when I just rode down the street, counted 22 people out there with me. 22 people standing outside. I'm pretty sure I saw a drug deal going on, but that's speculation. Darrell, did you figure out how many applicants we had when we hired Ms. Connet?
Yes, 40.
40? From all over the country.
All over.
The best and brightest. You know, are you still under the opinion that we hired the best person?
So far, that is the indication.
I agree with you 100%. Now, I'm not going to have you go through the entire audit and all the claims that were made against Ms. Connet, because we'd be here all night. But I would like you to be able to answer these accusations right here. It said, "We would like to add that throughout this process, the city auditor has repeatedly used accusatory language in public forums, most recently at the Oversight Committee on Thursday, September 12th." Do you believe that's true?
No.
I don't either. "The auditor's continued hard-line stance, micromanagement, and unwillingness to compromise or consider our organization's reputation are inappropriate." Did you micromanage? Are those things true?
No, sir.
I agree with you. And we just hired an auditor. What's your salary, if you don't mind me asking? It's below the record, so.
Under $32, $329.
And they want us to spend probably what, another, how much would an outside audit cost? Another 10, 20, $30,000?
Could be $20,000.
Yeah.
$20,000?
Something by the hour after the resound.
Well, see, I think we already made an outstanding choice in choosing our auditor. She did a superb job, and now they want to suspend more of our taxpayer money to do it again and find the same things. Rick, last time we talked, you said that, I don't know where's your mouth, so if I do, correct me, but you said it did not appear like they were operating in good faith throughout these contract negotiations. Would that be, you said, you said it didn't look good from your viewpoint?
I don't, I can't really give you an opinion with regard to whether they were or not acting in good faith. I can give you the facts as I understand them.
You go ahead.
And we talked about how initially it was, you know, wanting certain things put on the agenda with regard to discipline and things along those lines. We had a conversation with them, and it probably isn't the best sort of way to go about this, which they agreed to initially. We began working on some amendments to the current existing contract to address some of those issues that we talked about. At some point in time, it went back to, we don't want to do that anymore. We want to put on the agenda the stuff that we asked for initially. So we've sort of gone back and forth. Not being with them in the room when those issues were discussed, I really can't tell you what the dynamics were that caused sort of that, a little bit of inconsistency with regard to these particular issues. What I do know is finally, the other day, we did get to sit down with them and talk through this in terms of, this is the best way we think to go about resolving some of these issues, sort of like we talked about initially. And we are more than willing to present what, you know, we drafted or present your proposal to council to find out what their comfort level is with regard to some of the disputed issues, to find out whether what council's opinion is or whether council is willing to move forward with a contract based on some of these issues, sort of hopefully getting resolved at some point in time.
When it comes to security, I think security is our most vulnerable, should be our absolute most paramount concern, especially in a shelter that we're combining people with mental illness, addiction issues, men and women. And we have no security, we're already wanting them right now, going in. I think that is an absolute deal breaker. I think there should absolutely be a third-party security. But even if we did that, I think this operator has acted in bad faith throughout this process. When I came on to council, one of my very first votes was to keep the shelter open for one month, because we had one month recurring, every month. It came back for vote. And I said, "If I don't see some accountability, I'm going to start voting no from here on out, but I want to give us a month to see what we can do." Well, the very next month comes around, you know what happened? The council members that were here then decided, "We want to put this on a one-year thing. We're going to vote for a one-year contract." And in the last year, 19 findings and audit, look what happened in a year. So I think, well, we just completely ignore this contract, we ignore this operator, we get rid of them completely, and we actually help these people. We have mental health services here ready to go. We have private organizations here ready to go. I'm sure we could find hotel vouchers. I know private organizations that would have given a hotel voucher to all 50 of these people today. So there are places for them to go. There are things we can do to get them help. That's what we should be doing. We should ignore this contract, get rid of this contract, and do what's best for our citizens and our taxpayers, and clean up our downtown. So that's what I have.
Councilmember Montoya.
Mr. City Manager, for those that are present with us watching online that aren't aware of the history of how Food and Shelter became the operator, can you please provide some background as to how and when they became the operator?
The city of Norman, well, actually, Food and Shelter was the shelter operator in years past, downtown in a facility either on the site of the current well that the county operates or adjacent to the site on which the county built the well. So it had operated in downtown for a number of years. For reasons I'm not aware of, they weren't able to continue that shelter operation, and we got notice in about October of 2019 that there would be no warming shelter available to the unhoused in Norman for that upcoming winter. At the time, the development center, the former central library, was vacant. We had just cut the ribbon and moved into the new library. We had not yet started construction to remodel the old central library into the development center, and we were able to come up with a handful of dollars within the general fund budget, and city staff operated the shelter from November of 2019 through March of 2020. We were getting ready to start construction to remodel that building, and we began a search to lease space to move that shelter operation to. We wound up leasing a building on Comanche. And we recognized, city staff, we didn't have the bandwidth to continue to operate that facility, and that's when we issued an RFP to find an operator. So I think we had two submittals, and one had greater capabilities in terms of a history of operating a shelter than the other, and that was the direction council chose.
Okay. Councilmember.
I would say we also started with a quarterly contract and amended month-to-month so that we weren't bringing people back every so often to decide whether to close it or shut it down.
And it was actually a request of downtown merchants, actually, to move it to a month-to-month scenario as opposed to every 90 days reoccurring.
Yeah. So we've already amended a contract once since we started, which lends itself to the evolution of what we'd like to see moving forward. I'll just say, I don't, I kind of think wanding is not too much to ask. I would say if they wanted a third-party auditor, they could pay for it themselves. I feel that's a fair compromise. Objection to city's right to recoup, I think is actually more protective of them, but I mean, if they want to open themselves up to greater liability by not including it, I don't, I don't know where the liability to us is. Like all our, you know, attorneys are in-house, right, in a situation like this? So, and then the objection to dedicated bank account, I also agree, it seems pointless if they're going to be leaving by March.
So I look at these things, and to me, three of them are deal breakers. The security, we've got to have, I agree with Councilmember Ball, that that is, particularly those women have to be protected. That's why they're in that place and not sleeping under a tree somewhere. The auditor, I fully support the work that she's done. It's, I've been audited before by other people, not by her, and it is always a difficult process when you're the one that's being audited because you don't like to see your mistakes made public, but that's the way that it goes. And frankly, everything that it seemed that she told us was a black and white thing. This, this happened or this didn't happen. This happened, this didn't happen, or it wasn't in accordance with. And so that makes sense to me, what we've done. And the ability to be able to recoup, we have to have. I agree with you on the bank account. If we're going to do it for three months, to me, that seems like a simple thing. You walk down and get a bank account and go away from it. I don't know why they're doing it, but if there was something that I had to give up, it would be that. The other ones, I'm kind of, to use your phrase, a hard up, saying it on, in doing things. I saw a hand go up, and I'm sorry, I didn't pay attention.
Councilmember Montoya.
Yeah, so I agree on the three points, and as far as the bank account goes, it's probably moot, but there are ways to set up accounting systems and chart of accounts. So, and just this interim time between now and the end, whenever they cease, it shouldn't be difficult based on the general ledger accounting system that they're using to set up a chart of accounts specific to the shelter. So not having a separate bank account is not a big deal. Yeah, the other three, definitely the security and the right to recoup, if that's standard language in a contract.
Councilmember.
Sorry, just looking at kind of their latest red lines and a lot of its black lines. So, but in 7.3 audit rights, they want the language that says, "Contractor also agrees to cooperate any additional risk assessment evaluation and periodic audit procedures to ensure adequate financial management of all funds." I don't know why, I mean, they would take out, why would not want to cooperate, making sure adequate financial management of city taxpayer funds? I don't know why they ask him to remove that.
On that one, like a risk assessment, and again, I will defer to the object. I think that, like, especially ongoing risk management, like, as you like, keep assessing a contractor or its potential risk, right? I think that's something that you do on an ongoing basis. Because it's a short-term contract, I don't necessarily know if that would be as, you know, as impactful or as something necessarily we would be tied to. And again, I think that, you know, if there's anything in that that we would just be dead-set on, I think that we have plenty of room elsewhere to. And again, I think that, you know, if there's anything in that that we would just be dead set on, I think that we have plenty of room elsewhere to, you know, fully exercise those rights. So that one, again, I'm not really concerned about from a, you know, contract language perspective. I think that the biggest one is just the third party contractor. And then, you know, their ability to respond, which again, I think is standard. Anyway. So yeah, that, that, I think that's why we didn't really have an issue with that one.
And they also took out the word all and shall at all times have the right to option, uh, option to monitor, inspect, audit and review. And they added, uh, be done so with proper notice to the contractor and its board of directors. I mean, what would a proper notice be today?
Yeah, and that's, you know, language we would want to refine further. Um, a-again, we just received this red line within maybe the last hour. So. I, I haven't really fully looked at the detailed language. I think that, again, there's gonna be some refinement needed on this language anyway. And, and I think that if, if all they're wanting is some sort of notice, if we initiate an audit, I, I don't see anything wrong with that. I think that that's something we would normally do anyway. So i- in the terms of refinement, we might have to refine that language to get to that intent, to make sure the contract language is clear and unambiguous. But in terms of the intent, I think.
Any thoughts or comments? Do you need any direction out of us?
I do. So.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I think it's important that we find an operator moving forward that can dedicate themselves not only to the services that the unhoused are requiring, but also, uh, be able to handle the administrative tasks that we're putting forth in this. You know, we set those standards by national standards and we don't have to continue to have, um, a half an effort towards those things. We didn't set up our partner for success very well last time, it doesn't seem like.
Correct.
And they had def- they had difficulty meeting the needs of those operations beyond the service of caring. But I don't think we should amend our requirements to continue with an operator that's not capable of meeting the contract standards that we put forth.
Um, in terms of further, you know, feedback, I think there is some hard decisions potentially ahead of council, right? Because, you know, I, I think we've got plenty of feedback to kind of go back to Food and Shelter. And, you know, see if they'd be willing to agree based on that feedback. If not, council will have to figure out whether it is willing to operate under the current contract. We've, uh, in my opinion, we have operated under this new contract or this current contract for far too long. It was, it was, it should have only been a four month contract. And then, you know, this is kind of where we were hoping to be four months after the start of the shelter with this new contract, right? And it, it has been a lot longer than that. So but that again, do we want to do four more months is the, is the question we have. With the current contract, if they're not amenable to those changes, right? And it sounds like we are, with the changes identified, more happy to operate under that new contract. But that will be the alternative if they're not willing to agree, right? And then what is the city's response? And correspondingly, what is the direction to staff on October eighth? Because again, we need, we need to appropriate funding for October at the very least. If we're moving forward past October, we'll need, you know, obviously we will need appropriation until the end of the winter season at least. If we are not comfortable moving forward under the current contract for the winter season, um, and they are unwilling to agree to a new contract, then the alternative would be canceling the current contract. And that would probably be effective thirty days after the meeting on October eighth.
And the monetary commitment that we would need is sixty-five thousand, three hundred per month, is that correct?
Fifty-four thousand for the month, oh, oh, sorry, for, under the new contract, it would be actually about the same, fifty-six thousand dollars. The price didn't really go up that much, other than maybe two thousand dollars.
We have until the eighth to make this decision, or you wanted to make it on the eighth?
At the very least, we'll need appropriation on eight, um, for at least another month. But, I mean, March thirty-first is, you know, not, not much time away. And it's gonna be thirty days notice to cancel that contract, so.
So it's too much worth at least appropriations.
Yeah, pretty much.
Hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. What's your guys' thoughts? Yes, sir.
I mean, I think for me, this discussion we're having is less about the current operator and the current shelter, but more so setting up the framework for a potential future operator, future shelter and making sure that, you know, we set that entity up to succeed, succeed. So I, I think, I think bullet point number three is where I'm gonna lean at right now. You know, I'm willing to negotiate on the bank account, some of the, some of the minutia, some of that stuff, but I, I don't see really, um, much movement on security, on, you know, giving up our right to audit. I think that I would like to see a revised agreement with those terms negotiated. But to that point, City Manager Pyle, do you happen to have an update potentially on, uh, land or facilities that we explored a few months back that were potential options at one point? We are under the impression, the State Department of Mental Health through O M E S has engaged a real estate broker to initiate the sale of portions. So assuming not all one big chunk.
Right.
But piece by piece sales of that land. We have not seen advertisement or listings of that real estate, but that is information we've heard, have not yet verified. So seems like our plans might be tossed. Yeah, definitely slowly in development with the state on the other end of the transaction.
Okay. Yes, sir.
How fast could we potentially get one of the new operators in place?
It's way too early to tell. I mean, even if an operator would be willing, right, theoretically to operate the shelter, it's if they are able, right? And I think that staffing is always a huge concern. And again, I think what we have heard, again, and it's, it's been really great to hear it. When we go to these operators and say, hey, would you be willing? You know, some of the first questions they always ask is, are we going to be able to help the people that stay in the shelter, right? Like what are your resources? What are, what is your community profile, right? Are we able to be actually get these people into housing? Or are we gonna be spinning our wheels just housing the same people over and over every night? And I think that we do have a great set of resources for our community. That being said, I mean, is that going to be enough? And because it's a huge ask, right, in such a short period of time. I think if we had longer, we'd have better, I mean, if, if it's to operate the shelter tomorrow or not into March thirty-first, our prospects look better, right? And, and so it's too early to tell, but I think the longer lead time is the better.
Councilmember. In your limited talks with a potential new operator, um, do, do you think they would have any desire to hire staff if Food and Shelter is leaving at the end of March? They'll probably have to fire some people because they won't need that many. So there's opportunity to kind of meet that staff in case there are folks that are qualified.
No, absolutely. And so that, that was a, a question, right? I, I don't necessarily know what that would look like and it's gonna depend on the operator and their, you know, administrative capacities. And so I, I think that is definitely an, an option and, and probably a very easy solution to a potential staffing problem. But, um, and then we're, we're already, staff's already looking, um, for people to staff that anyway, externally. So like maybe someone left another organization and we have a pulse on that and maybe that is someone who we can kind of tap for, potential, you know, service provider, case manager, whatever have you. So we're, we're trying to, you know, rally the troops with the C O C and with, you know, our connections as best we can to kind of help partner with any new outside, you know, organization so that we can have them hit the ground running as soon as possible. So we're, we're not, we're not leaving a stone unturned, but, um, I think that is definitely one stone that's easy to look under.
Like Anthony said, we have more resources available here than anywhere else in the state. We have state resources, we have county resources, we have so many private organizations. If we close the shelter, and that's what I think we should do, number four right there, amend it, close shelter, period. We don't need to find another operator. We can get these people to help. The people that actually have mental health abilities or disabilities here, people who are suffering from addictions, there are places available, ready to take right now. We have housing. We may not be able to get them in tomorrow, but I guarantee we could find hotel vouchers available until we have resources in our housing available. There is help available, but if we keep this Band-Aid, and that's all it is, it's a Band-Aid. Y'all, y'all put it on the city four years ago. And the only way to let it heal is rip it off. So we need to rip this Band-Aid off, shut this shelter down and find real, real solutions. And there are real solutions. And there's a ton of organizations that'll provide them, so.
And I'm, as operating and staff is operating on the assumption that regardless of what we do with Food and Shelter, we are looking for a new operator one way or another, um, as a potential, right? So I, I think that, um, the feedback from the majority of council has been offer a shelter. And that's kind of where staff is going moving forward.
Before you speak, with, with, with an addition to that, the idea of putting, of, of not going into another summer, of not going ad infinitum as, as, as we are now. The understanding, winter is lousy to be outside and that could be deadly. I agree with council member Ball, it, it just, it, it needs to be gone. But does it need to be today? And that's the hard question. Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry. Did I answer your question?
No.
Well, in that case, maybe we, staff does need feedback and, you know, whether or not council would have a, a palette. Because I mean, this is a very important, like I need to be able to tell an operator, this is for winter or this is for year round, right? And that could impact whether or not they're willing to do it either in one way or another. And so getting that feedback, that is very valuable feedback because we need to be able to tell an operator.
We, we did not operate a year round shelter until twenty twenty-one. Prior to that, it was like first of November to middle of March when the temperatures stabilized. That, that was how we operated for historically until twenty twenty-one, twenty-two.
Okay, so technically, uh, summer is our deadliest months for weather fatalities. And our state government has some statistics on Oklahoma's heat related fatalities. I would want year round. I'm also aware that the operator that is interested has developed pathways for people to get back into the workforce. And that is a gap here. Uh, we do have a day labor van that we're looking into, but I appreciate that this particular operator, uh, sees not only, you know, very basic level work, like a day labor situation, but also, um, creating the types of industries that would give people the skills to integrate back into the workforce, just like they need the skills to get back into housing and stay housed. I did have something, but whenever you interrupted, maybe it'll come back to me, but off the top of my head, just to address those things. Yeah, I, I see, uh, the gap even not having a day side. Uh, I think the ultimate goal was to see a twenty-four seven shelter. And to me, the contract negotiation process is a part of an evolution to getting towards that.
Hearing a few, uh, here's, here's the problem, right? Uh, and I'm gonna push you guys on this because I, I think that it's important to know where we stand because here's the thing, if it's not a year round shelter, we shouldn't even look for an operator for the winter season. Because they're not gonna have, you're gonna hire people in two months and you're gonna operate for two months, it's not gonna be feasible. If it's something that we need to look for and we need to look for it maybe for next winter, I mean, well, one, that gives us a little bit more breathing room because, you know, they're gonna be able to prepare for it. They can, you know, understand what they're getting into. If it's a year long or if, if it's a year round shelter, then as soon as possible is best, right? But also, w- we know what to expect, they know what to expect. If you're, if you're evaluating it from like feasibility standpoint and like, you know, cash flow standpoint, it's also important, I, I, if I don't have an answer to that question, we're not gonna get a new operator. So, um, it is really important for that feedback, so.
Let me pose one more question to council. If you took council member Ball's idea and used vouchers instead of that room, is there, well, I'm part of those. Do you have a better background on how many rooms, places are available for these people? Let's say we took in, in over the winter months, vouched people up to a certain amount. I don't know that amount, I'd say throw in ten thousand, we'll, we'll start with that because I think that's low.
I think we had a conversation about the cost in an oversight meeting and it was much more than what we spend per month to keep that friend's house open.
It, it just, it, I, I don't guarantee that we could pay all of a, of a person's thing, but if we went to pay thirty percent of them, uh, thirty percent of the rent, could they pay the rest? You know, would there be ways of sharing that as a, um, and still they need money for medicine, not all the rest, the other kinds of things that are, that are particularly important as by a case to case basis. But would that be a better solution? To me, it's, it's a, it's a bigger open box because we don't have, we don't know that there are two hundred and fifty beds sitting somewhere waiting on people to, to have payments made for them. Uh, how would we do that? Because I don't know the hotels have.
In the fall, that might be a tall order considering what our hotel room rates are and occupancy for our gains. Yeah, there are significant challenges to doing the voucher system.
Yeah, I remember we talked about, I'm sorry to jump in here. When we talked about the Hootner Drive location, there was a extended stay hotel directly adjacent to that property. And they had a lot of consternation about allowing this population to stay. And so I just, I'm not sure that you were gonna have the, the property owners willing to meet the demand. I mean, even if we had the budget, I don't think there's enough, there's enough room stock to fill the need.
Or the case management, that would be the other part.
Case management is key with me because it's, you have to have throughput, otherwise we're becoming a stagnant pond. And so if we got throughput, it makes perfect sense to me to give somebody a hand, go on and, and go off and do things if that's drug and alcohol treatment, if that's whatever, uh, you know.
I would say the downside to not having something year round would be the cost and services addressing a population who would be otherwise overdosing on the street or having other events. It costs us a lot less to be dealing with it when it is over there, even though it is, it's got its issues, so.
I think the answer to saying, do we, do we have a, a, a consensus by October eighth? I would sense that we do not. Correct me if I'm wrong. What I'd like to do is, is not have, uh, October eighth as a target, but maybe Oc- October eighth is another discussion time that we can sit down and see what we can find. We're, I think we're a lot of pages that are about on the same, but we haven't got on the, on a, on a page yet. Would that be correct to you guys? Put it off for another two weeks.
And our ability to, like I said, we don't get to vote in study sessions and pre-council conference. The ability to bring you what we think may be the closest to consensus in an agreement and then literally get votes up, votes down and be able to take action based on, you know, is it a, is it a winter only, is it a year round scenario? And be able to have that conversation at a council meeting where we really do get to count yeses and nos to get where we need to get. So it's painful, but it's the public process. We really get to ask and answer those questions for real in a, a genderized meeting.
Do we have to vote to appro- Do we have to vote to appropriate funds by the eighth?
Yes, we got bills to pay, so. We'll, we'll have an action item on to at least, at least pay the bills. And, you know, like our federal government does with an ongoing appropriation, it'll be one of those kinds of things. So, not a lot of changes to it, but a continued resolution just to make sure we're paying the bills under the current contract amounts.
All right. So, you're saying we're, we're gonna do this on the eighth?
We'll get the appropriation, we can pre-council conference it, and actually have some action items lined up to, you know, we'll know exactly the will of the council on the eighth. Is it, yeah, year-round, winter-only?
Yeah, and in terms of like the Food and Shelter contract, we have consensus, I think, on, you know, how to move forward. But in terms of like the overall long-term vision, I think that, yeah, warrants more discussion. So, we'll take that feedback and then we'll bring something on the eighth.
Just to add last thing, I think it's a completely different conversation if we're talking about a different location.
I think that, absolutely.
If this were easy, this problem would have been solved for everybody. It's that challenging scenario.
Well, thank you, sir. I very much appreciate your input. Item number two. Consideration of adjourning into executive session is authorized by Oklahoma statutes under Title twenty-five, Section three oh seven B four to discuss possible litigation regarding the construction of Norman Central Library. Motion, thank you. We are in executive session.